We'd like to call this meeting to order. And we recognize our media, Temple Star, Rennie, still stoically there. And then we have Corey McCarthy there for Channel 32. So thank you so much for being there for us and recording. We have an opening prayer by Councilor Barfus.
Our dear family father, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together this evening to represent the citizens of our town. We pray that thy spirit will be here with us, that we'll be able to debate the issues in front of us in good faith, and that we'll be able to practice good governance practices in our debates and in our discussions. And we ask for these things that are in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We have the agenda before us. Jeff, there is a question that we might want to put on the 10. Is the transition between deputy mayor to deputy mayor? We do not know when Councilor Garry is coming back, and we need a motion to probably figure out when that will happen.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. So this is the addition to the agenda.
Under where?
Under 10A.
Questions?
Yeah. All right. Any other additions? I think none, I need a motion. Thank you.
Make that motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. No delegations today. We need to adopt the minutes, and we will sign the minutes. Councilor Pivoy?
Move to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting.
Of February?
February 10.
Thank you, 2015. All in favor? Thank you. No question.
Wait.
Yes. And we need a second motion for the public hearing that was for the municipal development board.
Okay, I will move that we adopt the minutes of the public hearing from February 10, 2015.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Today, just to give you a little bit of background there, we are a little pressed all time because at 6 o'clock, that is the AGM for...
That's at 7.
Or 7 o'clock.
7 is the AGM. 6 is the regular meeting, 7 is the AGM.
And so Councilor Edmonds will go to the meeting. Is that what it is?
You need to lead by 6.
All right. Thank you. So if we see Councilor Edmonds leave, we'll know. Let's go on to 7, request for decision. Administration has given us a fair background regarding the issue of one of our business owners. And what is the issue there is that while Mr. Kimley thought that he understood the implication, the final financial implication of stopping the meter from running, he didn't really quite understand that it is not the same thing as removing the whole meter. When you stop the meter from running, you don't stop the charges that goes along with it. And the charges are linked to the peak usage for the industrial building that he was in, commercial building. Therefore, they were extremely high. And truly, Mr. Kimley did not understand that by removing the meter, the charges will all disappear. The building is vacant. And so what administration proposed, which I feel is fair, is that there is a way to credit Mr. Kimley on his NMAX bill for a total amount that is incorrect in your package. When I did the math, I realized that the figure that is correct is $633.71, as reported in a little grid you have here.
Not the $731?
No, it's not $663.71. It's $633 was the type of...
I've got $731.91 in mind. That's the total bill.
That's the total bill. This is from administration recommends we waive.
What we will not waive, what administration requests that we do not waive, is all the other utilities, garbage recycling, D and R charges, which should be up to the owner of the facility to deal with. So do we have a motion, and then we could discuss?
I'll make a motion. Richard, you want to make it?
You go ahead.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we credit back the distribution administative piece, charge the vacant premises in the amount of $633.71.
To Mr. Kimley on a commercial property, non-occupy. Okay. Questions?
I've had this myself with a vacant property that I have, but I can hear well. So when I called the town to discuss this, they explained to me very well that not only you have to have the meter, but you have to have the services disconnected as well. And so I told them, do that immediately. And so they came and totally disconnected the wiring and everything, and took out the meter and the whole thing. And then we left it up to NMAX to credit. Now, and I feel for Mr. Kimley here, because if he has the same experience that I have with NMAX, then he's going to have nine months of struggles with NMAX to get it right. Because I got nine months' worth of bills on a regular basis regarding my, still my electrical and my water and sewer. I had everything disconnected. And I kept on getting it back, and I had, and I talked to nine different people. Finally, I got a supervisor, and then I got everything credited back to me. But it took nine months. And I think that somebody's going to have to maybe be there, an advocate for Mr. Kimley, you know, to help him through this, because he's not going to hear when he sees another bill. Because they are not quick about making those changes, even though the town directs them to do that.
Councilor Barnes, that's a very good point. And I think administration is on that one. Would you like to address that, Jeff?
I feel like I should have the lectern here, that it's not very formal. But in the absence of the lectern, I agree with you, Councilor Barnes. And one of the reasons why this is in front of you is, nine times out of 10 administratively, we would not know this was happening, because the customer would phone NMAX, request the disconnect, it would be dealt with, the billing would happen. But Mr. Kimley simply can't use the phone.
That's right.
He can't hear them. And so he came to us, saying, I'm frustrated, I keep getting these bills, I wrote a letter to ask him to stop, they said they never got the letter. Well, I don't know where the letter went in his defense, I just don't know. And so you saw in your package, we wrote a couple letters on his behalf, and with our customer client representative, sent them directly to her to deal with, to try and get this sorted. And then after the first one, when he still kept getting charges, we were able to, we tried to explain a number of these ramifications, but obviously, it wasn't adequate for his Right now, how it sits is all of the other utilities, with the exception of electricity and garbage and recycling, which will stay on, because there's a physical property there, but they're $12 or $13, it's minor. Those are done, they're off. And we have been in conversation with NMAX to say, once we get a position of council, we need to apply this. So he is getting no charges even for electricity anymore. That's all done. And it's finalized. This is actually an outstanding balance that we're dealing with, because we wanted to make sure that everything was dealt with, and we asked him to bring in his final bill once he got it, which he did, so that we knew the balance we were dealing with. So I agree with your statement. I think in this case, we are now at a point where we can make that one administrative request, should council choose, and it should be dealt with.
Okay. All right. So, Councilor Pivoy?
Just follow up question. Do we charge to remove a meter in this way?
Yes. There's a, I want to say $35 charge, and that's not one of the charges I requested to waive.
No.
That's still left as his responsibility, and he recognizes that. The other thing to Councilor Barnes, if I might, Madam Mayor.
Sure. Go ahead.
I've met, he came in with a friend last time to try and help communicate his frustration and position as well. And he also has family who helps him with those things. I've already met with both of them to say, he needs to understand that when he wants it reconnected, there's an amount of paperwork that needs to be done, an amount of correspondence with NMAX that someone will have to help him with. We're always happy to help the residents in liaising with NMAX when they've hit a wall. That's part of the process, we can do that. We don't want to be everyone's liaison with NMAX when they hit a wall, or when they just have a frustration. They need to go through the process. So we've met to say, when he wants that reconnected, he needs to understand he's not going to call someone on Monday, and it's reconnected on Tuesday.
It's a process.
Because he doesn't have a site ID anymore. He doesn't have any of that, it's gone. As far as utility companies are concerned, the building doesn't exist. So there'll be a process, and he's going to need some help through that, and between his family and friends, I think that's all okay. So I think we've waded through a lot of that.
I think, considering the situation, I believe the motion is a fair motion. So are we ready to vote on this motion? All in favor? Thank you. I appreciate that. Tonight, Mr. Kimley saw me and said, what have you decided? I said, 5:00 o'clock. 5:00 o'clock, I decided. They'll be happy to know what we did. 7B is a cat bylaw. Now, here, it's really a first stage of a bylaw that is there for your perusal. Please inform administration if you find some blatant mistakes. I found a couple that I will report, and I think Councilor Crebs found the same as I did. And have questions ready for next time, when we look at it a little bit more carefully. It's kind of a little bit drafted after the dog bylaw, but if you feel there's some wording, some items there that really cause you angst, please bring them forward. Let's try to deal with them at a council of the whole. And let's try to flush it while I'm on time. Okay. Still taking time to...
To come and give us feedback from his point of view on, you know, maybe why the cat bylaw, the address is what it is. Because he has to deal with it directly. I would appreciate having Lloyd's input at the committee of the whole level as we discuss the details of the bylaw.
Thanks. It's a fair request. So we won't make any decision, except it will move forward.
Do we want a first reading?
No.
Nope.
I don't even think we need that. I think we need to take...
We'll defer to CCLW anyways.
Yeah.
I have questions, but I think we'll just defer until CCLW.
Jeff, would you like to have a question sent to you, if it's from an administration point of view, or what would you prefer in that case?
The only challenge is I've got to do the agenda for CCLW by this Friday. So if you have some things tomorrow, or Thursday, that we can, then by all means, and just carbon copy the entirety of council, please. But yeah, by all means, I just don't, I may not be able to provide thorough background to everything between the time to put your agenda package together on Thursday or Friday. But yeah, by all means, send questions, and then we can start to have a feel for where council might be thinking or heading with it. And then we can address those. I can have Lloyd speak to them all on Tuesday.
Okay. Good. Thank you. So is that agreeable with all of you? Thank you. Okay. 7C, Cartston County letter request. As you could see, it has to do with the calling of deers in McGrath, and it has to do with the fact that hunters that have a license for deers might go hunting during the hunting season and not catch the limits that are given, the privilege to catch, and would like to be able to participate in a McGrath call and be able to complete their quota. I'm not so sure why the county needs our support with that, to tell you the truth. Maybe administration can help us with this.
Well, I have a comment. I definitely have a comment. McGrath has got the problem, we've had a big problem this year.
Yes.
The problem that we've had in our own town is increasing every year. And it's getting so that we're having our own big resident herd, and we've got to do something about that before it gets out of hand, like McGrath did.
But let's try to deal with that particularly.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm very much in support of this letter, because of our own situation.
So what exactly would you like us to do? Do you want us to send a letter of support as they are requesting?
Yeah.
My issue with this letter actually isn't the support for the hunt or anything, but I actually prefer the way that it was done this year, where they did separate draws for that hunt, as opposed to their suggestion here, that we support having them, anybody who didn't fill a tag be able to...
Fill their quota.
I, from a game management perspective, I don't think wildlife would be excited about that. And I don't know that we want to be involved in that discussion with something that's going on at that level. And that's what their letter is asking for support of. They already had the draws to have their special hunts for it. And that's not what they're looking for, from what I can read. What I'm seeing is, is they want to be able to just carry over the unused tags.
Finish their quota by participating in it.
I just don't see that as a good idea.
Yeah, because that really, this becomes a new season.
I don't know.
Right? That's what they did. Yeah, that's what they did, is they created three different seasons.
Exactly. So, and with that in mind, they should be getting new tags.
Well...
Which is what they did this last year.
Yes.
What they're requesting here is...
That's right. So I guess, yeah.
I think you can get it that way. To me, it was, you go hunting during the deer season, you don't have all your quota, but McGrath, two months later, has a call, and they want to participate in that call. To me, that's only two items. I don't see it as three. Am I right? Am I wrong? I don't know.
So what they did is McGrath ran three different seasons for their call. It wasn't just one.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
And, yeah, so what they're asking for here, though, is that fish and wildlife just carry over any unused tags for the general deer hunting season.
Yeah, I understand that part.
And I see that as problematic on many fronts.
Here's the other issue, is that they're saying, because they've had an antler-whitetail tag, they want to be able to allow them to be shooting an antlerless deer, which they're changing altogether. And that becomes a logistical issue as well.
What is administration's position for council?
So, okay. I had a couple of things that were unique about this request. One is it was directed at me to send a letter to the bureaucrat in the ESRD, which is normally a bit unusual. Normally, administratively, I'm not sending a letter to, you know, a manager in another provincial department, because I understand why, because they're the ones that are going to make the recommendations, and it's not time to take them to the minister. I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I wasn't going to send a letter without some council discussion. The concept of changing the antler-to-antlerless call isn't a new one, they do it with elk, and it's relatively common, there's just not that many bucks left after a year, and you need some for next spring.
Yeah.
So they change it.
Ah, I see.
I have talked to the town of McGrath, and asked what their position on this was. Their position is, it was a positive thing for the town, they support it, they will be supporting the request.
Okay.
Because they want to see it continue. Whether, now to Councilor Barfus's comment, I did not, I did not distinguish with the town of McGrath whether they wanted it to continue in the way it was administered this year versus the proposed. So I didn't make any distinction there with them, I don't know if they have any feeling one way or another. But overall, the town of McGrath feels it was a positive thing for them as a community, and wishes some kind of call would continue.
Okay. So the position of the town would be, they would be welcoming the support of all town regarding that initiative?
Yeah.
Even if you...
And I would be prepared to, for a letter to go out, saying, we're supportive of the concept of a call. I have no problems with that. I just don't want, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be dictating what the terms of that call are.
Okay. So would you make that motion, councilors, since you have the idea of what...
Sure. I'll move that we send a letter to, who's it?
ESRD.
ESRD, giving support for the call hunt that was done in McGrath, and recommending that it be continued.
Okay. That's fair enough. Are we okay with that? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Now, regarding the issue that you, is linked to that with the deers in town, maybe that should be put on another agenda.
We're going to have to look at it someday down the road, because there's been a lot of complaints. I've had all kinds of phone calls, I've had people on the street, what's the town going to do?
I had 12 of them in my backyard.
And there's actually not that many deer yet.
And there's 13 of them.
Comparatively.
I had 13. I had a brush next door coming through my yard. I put a fence up that they can't get into my yard, but they have been in there.
Does anyone know how to jump really good?
They can jump pretty good.
Just important, but if you're getting a lot of questions, I would recommend that you make sure it's clear that it's not a piece of your jurisdiction, that you will lobby the appropriate government agencies. But I wouldn't give the illusion that you can run in town.
You cannot deal with this as well, don't you?
It's fish and wildlife.
Yeah, so yes, we need to lobby the appropriate agencies. We can't just extend the dog bylaws.
Yeah. It's hard to pinpoint the owner. The mega kid. Whitetail is not a dog.
If we have it at a meeting down the road, it'll be good, we'll decide then what to do. Okay. So now, we are going to go on the 8As, there's no report. 9A is a CAO report. Are there any questions? Thanks, Jeff, for doing that. Appreciate that. And I had to remember that was Jeff writing it on my desk.
That's why I put the brackets, I, Jeff.
I appreciate that, because I was thinking, is this Jeff, or is this Murray's?
So thank you for doing that also. Any question, Jeff? No? Go ahead.
Yeah. Do we have a proposed schedule for that intermunicipal meeting that is referenced?
Not quite yet.
Yeah. So, like I said, I met with Murray. I want to say this carefully, because it's truly my intent. My worry with this project is it quickly becomes, if we're pushing the agenda, it becomes the town pushing the agenda. And it's not how this project was intended to be.
No.
This was an equal partnership between all the participating communities. We all went in equal, and we all need to participate equal. So I've met with Murray, we've gone over it, I've explained all the details from our point of view. He's going to talk with Harold if there's anything ambiguous, and then he's going to speak generally about it to his council, and then we'll get a date set for the intermunicipal. But I want it to be coming from him.
Yeah, and which is fair.
I just don't want it to look like Jeff's coming to try and get some money for rec.
No, and I appreciate...
I want it to come across as a shared thing. So not yet, but hopefully soon.
And was there a subcommittee struck to deal with that, or with the shared services research program?
If you remember, it was Marion that had applied for grants. And then there was visibilities originally, that was the whole idea. Out of that research came the refining that we did, there were 12 points, we limited them to six. And six of those points were of interest in our relationship with the county. So this is how it kind of expanded under that grant.
Yeah, so if I recall correctly, we held a meeting in this very room, where we invited all the other municipal leaders, and we sat down with the people who conducted the review, the administrators of the review, and gave them our direction. I'm just wondering if now that it's all said and done, if we shouldn't have a repeat of that meeting, where now we expect them to give us a little debrief, answer questions that we may have, get their suggestions, but that way it'd be neutral in that kind of a setting where...
I would suggest that that probably is somewhere down the road, after the county has had an opportunity to be able to go through and...
To read it, yeah.
Get to their stage.
Sure, sure. And so I'm just thinking, maybe before that intermunicipal, that might be...
So what do you have in mind exactly? Do you have in mind to have Murray and the whole of council with us? Is that what you're thinking?
I'm not even, yeah, yes. It would be a repeat of what we had originally.
Because intermunicipal is there to kind of bring in...
Well, the review is the result of that grant, and that grant was multiple municipalities, not just us, the county.
Right.
Right? So I'm thinking we should probably have the report of that entire review back to all the municipalities that were involved, and then after that, you know, we can schedule...
Except that since that report started, the villagers have gone their own ways.
Understood, but...
So the villagers wouldn't be specially interested.
They exited out of that process.
Yeah, and this is, maybe Jeff can address that issue a little bit better.
Sure. This has been an interesting process, because you remember, the catalyst for this whole study was to help the villages.
Yes.
And the end report, there's no mention of either of them. They're nowhere to be seen in the entire report. So we came around a long way. In my conversation with Murray, and I think maybe what you're alluding to, Councilor Pivoy, is, he asked, he said, well, why don't we have Harold Johnzood come down even and present it to the intermunicipal, at the very least? Because he's kind of that neutral party, and it's not one or the other. Harold has blocked it that early on. Now, I'll have some further conversation with him. He just wanted each community to look at the pieces of that that really applied to them, and kind of hash it over, and then give some feedback, and then we'll formally conclude it at that time. His initial position was that he thought it should just be taken by the politicians to the politicians, and I understand where he's coming from, I see that. But I haven't, and neither has Murray, we haven't ruled out the merits of him coming back one more time in front of all the councils potentially. So I got to kind of see how that plays out. The other thing that happened too, is the, of the five things that made it through to the end, now, many of you may recall, there's those other six or seven that we said, we're going to put a tack in these, and we're going to make a commitment to address these down the road, but for right now, we're going to leave them. Of the four or five things, they are relatively mutually exclusive with McGrath and Cartston. So it's Cartson and the county, and McGrath and the county, but not so much anymore, or they intended to be Cartson and McGrath and the county. So this thing really whittled down into something quite specific, and I think that's where Harold is trying to decide...
How to do it.
Do I just let McGrath intermunicipal talk with the counties intermunicipal? Because the issues on the table now aren't actually the same as the ones between the town and the county. And the villages have now gone and done their own thing, which seems to be going well, and that's great. They seem to have some feel of sustainability there. So if nothing else, it got the thinking of the process going around, and they came with some solutions, which is great. But I hear what you're saying, I do, and I need to talk with Harold a little more, and I think if he could be the one that would come, present to all the parties left, it would give it that, this was a cooperative venture, we're all in this together type of deal.
Arms-length, third-party.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think there's value to that, for sure.
Well, I think it's a point of quotation. You're right. You start, you finish, even if it's not with the same partners. Yeah.
Or if we could have George Cup, just take it over.
So administration will carry on and give us a debrief as soon as I have some information. Okay, 9B, bylaw report. Any questions? Councilor Crebs?
A little question, I don't know if I can find it again, but it seems to me that there was an unusual number of items under other. Usually, other kind of cleans up whatever is left, and it looked like a major...
We're not so sure.
And I'm just...
Do you know what we could maybe to fix this issue? Could that be a little bit like what the police report is, a little bit other, meaning...
Synapse as well.
Give us a list of a little bit what the same compass, under other?
It's just one, it's that big of a bulk, it seems like it should, it must be something.
Probably deer.
If I might, Madam Mayor, and this is just to be funny, but you may recall last fall when Lloyd had other of about 325 or something, because you moved a wasp nest? I've got a rough idea of how many insects were in the nest. But, so I wouldn't rule out that maybe it's deer or something, but I will definitely follow up, and I'll send it up to council.
Okay. It's a good thing. It's a good thing. Thank you. Now, committee reports. We have not been as good this month, but then we all had...
I don't know that we haven't been as good. I think there's been meetings canceled and stuff.
No. What I think... What I'm trying to say is that personally, I didn't make the deadline for publications. That's what I'm trying to say. Okay. So maybe what we could do is if you have something to report, would you mind to do so? I gave you my reports. I printed them. I had sent them to Jeff, but Jeff was a busy man this week. And we will thank him for his busy time and very useful time this past weekend. It's been pretty brutal.
That's good.
Yeah. So go ahead.
Just one suggestion. And not that we didn't get the report. I'm wondering, we've made more of a trail of standing committee, is that right?
I am.
Yes.
With Bangre, right? So if we could add that to the thing. I recognize that we didn't get the report, but I just, I want to stay on top of that one.
Good.
Yeah. It's a good point. Any other question?
I could add two quick things report-wise. For Chief Mountain, we now have our draft proposal on our best practices study. So we should see that coming before council here shortly.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm talking way too much since meeting, and I apologize. I have that as well, and I've just been asked to hold it until the board has met their final time. And then I'll get it to council.
Okay.
Yeah. So our board hasn't had the file review of it yet, but we have now received it.
Okay.
And on the Cartston Collegiate Foundation, that is now the name of it.
You have had...
That is the formal name. And we will be having our actual foundation put together here within the next few weeks.
Oh, nice.
We're making some progress there. And...
Is Ryan Springham, Ryan Springham?
He is.
The head of it?
Yeah. He's driving that for us right now.
Well, he's our administrator. Brad Beazer has been appointed, sorry, go ahead, as the chair.
Okay. I just want to ask councillor Barnes something. At your last EMS meeting...
Yep.
Did you approve the contract for the chief?
Yes.
So that has gone through at this point?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. All right.
On our Community Future meetings, it was another extremely long meeting with travel time and meeting was a total of eight hours.
Really?
I think you need to...
What's that again?
Community Futures.
Community Futures. What about it? I'm sorry, I catch that with extreme this time. With the meeting time of six hours and two hours travel, it was an eight-hour day.
Well, okay. You know what? I think after we had that little bit of review regarding changes in assignment and all that, maybe what we have to look at is how many hours per month we pass on committees and try to see that it's a little bit balanced in a way they are assigned. Maybe that's what we need to do to be fair to all of you. I mean, some pass four, some pass 10 hours, you know?
I'm thinking, I mean, we're... Normally, our committee meetings might be an hour and a half or so. When you go something like a full day like that, maybe then we should be considering it.
Well, it's something we need to review, how we do business in that light. The regional meeting can be quite lengthy. It's... South Grove very often is three, four hours and two hours travel, same story. But, you know, how do we equalize that load? I don't know.
See, our meeting next month is going to be two days because it's their A G M plus planning meetings.
Yeah, it's brutal. Maybe, yeah. We need to look at it.
Can I make the suggestion to...
Sure.
Not every committee that we're on is representative of a whole lot of communities like the one that you're on.
Those are regional.
The regional meetings. And maybe we need to make a distinction of those meetings as opposed to our shorter meetings that we have.
Town, regional.
And make them...
Different pay scale.
Yeah, it's a different pay scale for those. It's only fair.
Those are good questions. That's something we will in the future look back and deal with it.
Don't your Chief Mountain meetings go quite lengthy at times too? Are they pretty quick?
Most of our Chief Mountain meetings are an hour and a half, two hours.
Yeah.
Perhaps what we need is a motion to add to the agenda at some point or even have a specific council meeting designated to, or a committee meeting, to reviewing our committees, our committee structure, our compensation policy. There might be a committee or two. We might need the level of representation that we have.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Why don't we put that into, because we're... Our next, probably our next meeting is when our report from Mr. Cuff will be here.
Not next meeting.
Won't be for... Next council meeting.
Possibly.
The next thing is because he's also making some recommendations that are uneven or C C W structure and everything else, that that might be an appropriate time for us to deal with.
Why don't we look at it...
During C C W?
Why don't we look at it in April? The C C W, which might change name, C C W, and look at those items?
What, you're talking about the cuff items, including the committee?
We might have to look at that.
Why don't we just call it organizational C C W or whatever? Review? I mean, that's effectively what we're dealing with, right?
I'm just, yeah. And based on Mr. Cuff's recommendation, it might be wise to get together to kind of disseminate the information, not to discuss, because that needs to be done in open council meeting. But maybe just a review.
A special meeting?
Well, I'm thinking we might benefit from.
Well, let's try to see what comes out down the pipe with the recommendation and then make a decision as how we move forward. Would that be fair?
Yeah. The way I'm kind of seeing it in my head is we need to look it over to decide what items need to be recommended as agenda items and put on an agenda.
So I guess what I'm thinking is, is that when April C C W comes by, we'll get our background here with that, that will give us kind of that information. And then maybe from there, we start making specific recommendations.
If we need a specific meeting to deal with specific items...
Then we'll know better after we've seen that stuff. That's one thing that...
Because the time we see that stuff, it's kind of hard for us to say these are what we'd like to have on the agenda.
My one fear, I don't have a problem with that, but my one fear is we're gonna, as Mr. Cuff pointed out, we're at a very interesting time where we're bringing on a new C A O right around that same timeframe. And it might be nice to have that discussion before, I mean, if we postpone till April C C W and then, you know, and then we start adding to the agenda weeks after that, we're gonna miss those essential changes that we can make before we implement...
Could maybe administration look into that timeframe for us?
If I might add something, this is maybe more of a request in absence of a white flag. If, I just want to manage the expectations of everything coming out of Mr. Cuff's review. I thought almost everything he recommended had merit and we should look at. I'm hoping it's not the expectation of council that we look at it by April 15th. We need to start incrementing this. And I think that if we get his report back, we should bring it to a C C W and set out a very scheduled, pragmatic timeline to hit these pieces.
And I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. Is that we get his report back and to be able to say these are the things that we want to deal with first and prioritize those. It's hard to start scheduling those for the agenda.
Okay. So maybe we should give a chance to administration to look at that. And then we as council will decide if that fits.
Just, I might just add one thing. The report we're gonna get from him is not gonna be able to be deciphered in one meeting.
No.
It's gonna take a series of these C C W meetings or a special meeting, right?
And it might take a few months and some more than others.
We can't be burdening administration right now with this because of the timeframe we have getting a new C A O.
My thoughts are that once we get that report, that we, in looking at it ourselves, should be able to look at it and say, "These are the things that are the most important to us individually."
Absolutely.
And request those to be dealt with as a priority item.
Yes.
Jeff wanted to say...
I just want to, I think Council P Boy's comments are apt, though, that we don't want to lose any momentum or strategic time on this. So trust me, I will try and make sure that this is at the forefront absolutely as much as we can. And I think we have to approach it much like a lot of the items that we tabled in our planning session, that we will pick these off a couple at a time at each subsequent, whatever we're going to call C C W meeting going forward. Or potentially, as has been said a couple times, we may just need to have almost a bit of a governance meeting.
Yeah, I think so.
And we're gonna lay out the plan to work on this over the next two or three years. Because the fact of the matter is, council, we don't want to bite this thing all off in one...
No, it's an elephant.
It doesn't deliver very good if you...
Yeah, we'll have a wreck. But I think I was pretty happy with what we heard on the outset. But there's some time involved there.
And I would really say for the public who is wondering what we're talking about, we had an organizational review. It was done by an outside consultant named George Cuff and Jeff...
Nixon.
Nixon. Yeah, thank you. The review was for us to improve our governance, which was deemed to be good. We're not satisfied with good. We want to be best. So that's what we're aiming for. And we also want to try to see how the structure at the top is maybe reviewed and improved for more efficiencies. And that is going to take a little bit more time and serious scrutiny of the whole organization. So in a nutshell, that's what we did.
So, yeah, just to kind of sum up, I'm seeing this review of committees as at least to possibly even a four-hour conversation as we really get down into, you know, recommendations. And I see obviously the cuff review is something akin to that. So I am leaning a little toward councillor Barnes's suggestion, perhaps looking at a special meeting.
Can we leave it with...
Well, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm not proposing that we schedule one. I'm just saying we should be open to one in the near future.
No, I think you're probably in the right thinking direction. But for me, it's difficult to kind of schedule that Jeff has to find the appropriate time in his awful busy schedule right now. And we going to soon go into completing their hiring process and it's...
Question on the hiring process. We were asked to...
But hold on a second. Is that on the chat?
Is it on there? Nope. Well, it's just a quick question.
I don't know, councillor, can I be finished?
That is very simple.
Okay.
You have questions coming up here.
Yeah, we have questions coming up. Okay.
Oh, okay.
10 A. There was a question there.
Yeah, I asked the mayor earlier. Previously, when there was a change in deputy mayor assignments, we had to make a council motion for changing that. And we are coming up with, and are we needing to, is that urgent to make that motion at this juncture?
It might have been, except I didn't bring it tonight. I need to check. I know that we've dealt with the banking, so we've got all that sorted out. They were getting all that changed with the bank. Is councillor Bangre here next Tuesday?
Well, that is a question we hope you had the answer.
I think he is. I think I remember him saying he would be back for... He's gonna be back Sunday night, I thought.
Okay. Jeff, could you send councillor B and...
We'll get it sorted.
Try to figure it out. Otherwise, we'll have to do it at C C W. Ah, no, we can't.
You can't, but there's nothing prohibiting him from chairing.
No.
You know, if you assign him as the chairperson, there's nothing prohibiting him.
He has been assigned by policy. So we have a policy in place that says that every eight months we will rotate. And the dates are very well laid out. So I believe that we are covered under that policy. Maybe you want to...
I'll have it reviewed for next meeting.
To that, yes.
As of March... My understanding, I don't have it in front of me, but my understanding is the policy states that if the deputy mayor is not present at a C C W, then the committee standing will choose a chair at that minute meeting.
Right.
We're covered with a...
At least procedurally, we're okay.
So we find... Okay. Councillor Barnes, 10 B.
Thank you. I just want to know now, what are the dates that we are going to get together with Mr. Highland now? Because it was deferred. We were going to be meeting in March. And now I understand we're meeting in April because there's been a large number of...
Councillor Barnes, because Jeff is a candidate, we cannot answer that question quite right here.
Well, I don't think we're discussing his...
He's just talking about calendar.